Welcome to the September 3, 2019, meeting of the Whitehall City Council for the purpose of considering such matters that may come before it. I'm going to ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance. And I got this backwards. First, I'm going to ask you for a moment of silence, then we're going to do the pledge. Thank you. I have to apologize, it's the first time I've ever done this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's what's happening. All right, Ms. Al, please call the rolls.
Bailey, Rodriguez.
Present.
Elmore, Coniston.
Here.
Cantor.
Present.
Peck.
Present.
Morrison.
Present.
President Graham.
Present.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to excuse the absent members, please.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Cantor and a second by Ms. Coniston to excuse the absent members. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
The absent members have been excused. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for August 20, 2019, the agenda and regular meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the August 20 minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Coniston and a second by Mr. Cantor for approval of the August 20, 2019 minutes. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Peck.
Yes.
Morrison.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. Next on our agenda, we do have a couple of special presentations, and the first one will be by our mayor, and I'll let her tell you about it.
And I just met a young man named James, and I'd like for James to come up and stand by me. Thank you so much for coming. And I was contacted to do a proclamation regarding September as childhood cancer awareness month, and this is his family. You want to tell us your family is here?
All right. Here goes my father.
Hi.
And that's my little brother. That's still my sister. They're in our home, they're back. That's my...
Hi, y'all. I'm James. All right. Whereas the city of Whitehall is committed to bringing awareness to the public, and whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, and whereas one in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed by their 20th birthday, and whereas 43 children per day, or 15,780 children, are diagnosed with cancer annually in the United States, and whereas two-thirds of childhood cancer patients will have chronic health conditions as a result of their treatment toxicity, with one quarter being classified as severe as life-threatening, and whereas there are approximately 40,000 children actively treated at any given time with an average age of six years old at diagnosis, and whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently with the help from nonprofit organizations at local and national levels, including the Friends and Faith Griffin Foundation, and whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure. Now, therefore, I, Kim Magner, Mayor of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, encourage all residents to observe childhood cancer awareness, and support this cause that so deeply impacts families and every community across our country. And I want to give this to you, James, that you can keep. And thank you so much for bringing awareness to this in Whitehall, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we do have another special presentation. It's from the Committee for Children, Community Outreach, and we have the coordinator here for the community outreach. Anyway, we have Doris Callaway-Moore here. She's going to tell us a little bit about the Committee for Children.
Thank you so much. James, you're a hard act to follow in relationships to you. Again, I'm Doris Callaway-Moore, and I have the privilege of being a former employee of Children's Services for 35 years until retirement, so I was pleased when they asked me to come back and help them with their levy campaign that's on the ballot. So if you will, I'd like to just give you a few nuggets, very briefly, about Children's Services, and then talk to you a little bit about the levy. But as you probably know, Franklin County Children's Services is the public county agency responsible for all of the county's abused, neglected, and dependent children. Unfortunately, Children's Services serves more than 30,000 children each year. Children come from all communities. There's not a zip code that's left out. We're all affected by that, unfortunately. The agency also works with over 100 partner agencies in the community, providing over $71 million in support to those agencies to help us provide supportive services to families. 67% of the agency's funding comes from two property tax levies, a 1.9 mil levy that was renewed in 2014, and this levy, which is a 3.1 mil levy originally passed by voters in 2009, it expires at the end of this year, and it accounts for more than 42% of the agency's funding. That's a huge chunk. It's approximately $85 million that it provides to the agency. So we're just seeking a renewal of this levy. There will be no increase in taxes, and I could say that over and over again. That's probably the most important point to homeowners, property taxpayers. Both, this levy will be for 10 years, as the others are, and we would love to have the support of the Whitehall City Council. So that's all I have. Do you guys have any questions?
Easy, Ed.
Well, no, you still have to work hard.
No, I mean us.
Yeah, you're easy because you don't have any hard questions.
Doris, I have a question. 85 million, is that a year, or is it spread out over eight years, or 10 years?
No, that's a year.
That's a year. That's phenomenal.
That's a huge part. I mean, 67% of our budget comes from these two levies, so, and we're a $200 million organization.
I can't even fathom what that would look like without that money, and it would really hurt the children, so.
It really would, and as you know, we have a no reject, no reject policy, so if a child is being abused, we tend to say, sorry, we don't have the money, we can't serve you. We have to serve them, but it means, you know, reducing staff.
Yes.
Slower services, those kinds of things, supporting services, the other things that help our kids. We have like a therapeutic arts program that deals with kids with traumatic illnesses and mental health issues, those kind of things go away, so.
Have you worked at the office around East Main Street?
No, I did, that's right here, and right around the corner from you guys, but no, I worked at 855 West Mount, the administration offices.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're quite busy on Sundays over here, I see.
Well, that's our intake location as well, so that's where we bring kids, 24/7, you know, all times of day and night.
Supervise visits and things like that as well.
And supervise visits take place there. You're very knowledgeable about it, see. You can do my job.
You do a great job.
Well, Children's Services does a great job.
Yes, they do. It's a tough job that they have.
It's a very tough job, but the kids make it worth it. What I said, people would often ask me, how did you do that for 35 years? Now, I had an easier job, I was in communications, but you look at these kids and all they've been through, and it's as if they're saying, yeah, life has dealt me an awful hand, but I'm going to make the most of it. It keeps you working really hard for them. They've gone through much more than I've ever had, so you want to, you want to help them in any way that you can.
Well, we appreciate you bringing the information and making it more public for everyone, you know, in this room, and everyone out there. You can wave to all the people out there.
My pleasure, and I may have done that a little bit early, but thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, this is our first opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you'll have up to three minutes. All right, seeing no one, we will move on to our standing committee reports, where you always begin with administration and financial management. That's Chairperson Bailey, he's unable to attend the meeting this evening. However, that committee did meet last week, their minutes are on file, and they shall also meet next week sometime after 6:30 next Tuesday. That brings us to community and elder advocacy. That's Chairperson Elmore, she is also unable to attend the meeting this evening. That committee also met last week, their minutes are on file, and they shall also meet next Tuesday sometime after 6:30. Next, we have community standards and enforcement, that's Chairperson Rodriguez. You're on the roll, keep going.
Yeah, same thing.
Community standards and enforcement did meet last Tuesday, minutes are on file, we'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30, right on back here. All right, thank you, sir. Next, we have economic development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic development also met last Tuesday, our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30 in the morning.
All right, thank you, sir. Next up, we have infrastructure maintenance and services, Chairperson Hen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure, maintenance, and services met last Tuesday, our minutes are on file, we have one piece of legislation, Resolution 14, 2019, and we will meet next Tuesday sometime in the back after 6:30.
All right, thank you. Next, we have public safety, Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public safety met last week, our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again in the back sometime after 6:30 on Tuesday.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have parks and recreation, Chairperson Hen.
Just going to add to this, thank you, Mr. President. Parks and recreation also met last week, in the back, minutes are on file, and as always, Marty and Joe always said, parks and recreation, round and third, and heading for home. We'll meet in the back next week, and there's somebody out there that knows what I'm talking about.
All right, well, those are all the officials' reports that we, or the standing committee reports we had this evening. We'll move on to our officials' reports, and we'll begin with our mayor, Ms. Ken Mager.
Thank you so much. Would just like to ask for favorable consideration on ordinances 101, 102, 103, 106, and 107. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have our city attorney, Mr. Michael Bibby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, thank you everyone for coming out this evening. The city attorney's office would like to report, in the month of August, we prosecuted 231 cases in our mayor's court. Out of those 231 cases, only 29 of those were committed by Whitehall residents, that's approximately 12% year-to-date. Both municipal and mayor's court, city attorney's office has handled 2,835 cases year-to-date. The large majority of these cases, there's been a huge uptick of traffic cases, so it's interesting. I'm going to, I haven't delved into what those traffic cases are, but they've really increased in the city of Whitehall, notwithstanding some of the development that has changed kind of the landscape of runs that we were used to seeing in the city of Whitehall. We've seen it still kind of stay steady as it relates to Whitehall residents, so we're still in that 10 to 12% margin. Next, October the 5, the city attorney's office, in partnership with Restore Whitehall, will be doing the community giveaway again for recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The reason why we do it as an open invitation to all the residents is obviously it's to benefit individuals that have, that have been victimized through domestic violence and empowering them to move on with their lives, but we don't want to single them out and let everyone kind of know that, put them in a fishbowl. So we invite the whole community to come out, to enjoy this opportunity, to exchange items, any type of items, and also, if you are a resident of the city of Whitehall, or if you're just listening by Facebook, you're welcome to make any type of donation to the city attorney's office, and those items will be given away October the 5, between the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Restore Whitehall, and we'll accept any donation between now, even up to that morning, because we'll start putting those things out as early as 7:00 a.m., and then the event will go on. And then lastly, members of council, I would ask for favorable consideration of Resolution 40, 2019.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have our city auditor, Mr. Dan Milner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report tonight. I would like to ask for favorable consideration on ordinance 105 and Resolution 43.
Thank you. Next up, we have our director of development and public service, Mr. Zach Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report this evening. I would ask for favorable consideration for ordinance 106, 2019. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next, we have our treasurer, Mr. Steve Blitzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report.
All right, thank you, sir. Well, there, in the council office, we have received no officials' reports since our last meeting, and so that brings us to communications, petitions, and claims, and we have no items listed on the agenda this evening. So that brings us to our public hearing. It's a public hearing for Resolution 42, 2019. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Works, in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Programs, and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency. So I will open that public hearing at this time, and for anyone, if there is anyone who would like to speak in favor of Resolution 42, 2019, please come forward, and as usual, state your name and address for the director.
Zach Wood, 360 South Yerling Road, Development Director, Director of Public Service. Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, myself and Ryan Andrews from EMHNT are here to discuss our proposal for the next round of the Ohio Public Works Commission Grant Program. Our proposal is to do some work along Poth Road from Yerling to, I believe, is it just to Hamilton?
No, all the way.
All the way down. The vast majority of the work will occur between Hamilton and Yerling, and will include, amongst other things, an actual widening of the road to three lanes to accommodate the additional traffic that we have seen over the past couple of years and the additional growth and redevelopment that we expect to occur in that corridor. As you are all aware, with DSCC changing, you know, the main gate, you know, or more recently to the Poth Road Gate, we see an increased amount of traffic going eastbound on Poth. That combined with the new industrial product and companies that are in the corridor do create some traffic congestion issues during the day, and so we certainly believe adding an additional lane will help alleviate a lot of that. In addition, we also will be installing a multi-use path down Poth Road that will connect to the path that we just installed or are installing along Yerling Road between Poth and Broad. This will also serve, this part of the path will also serve as the connector for the Central Ohio Greenways Trail that we envision will come south from the airport, go westbound on Fifth, cross the railroad tracks at Yerling, and then connect here at Poth, because there is no good way to go over or under the tracks at Hamilton. And so because there's already an accurate crossing at Yerling, that's the most feasible place to bring the Central Ohio Greenways Trail down, so it'll essentially go up Fifth to Yerling, Yerling down Poth to Hamilton. This will also, this project have awarded, just as a reminder, is a, what we're applying for is a 75% grant, a 25% loan. The 25% loan is converted to an interest-free loan through OPWC for the useful life of the project, usually 18 to 22 years. This project would also install lights similar to the ones we believe on Hamilton, might end up being the ones that we just installed on Yerling, but would install new decorative lights on Poth Road as well. Would improve the drainage significantly in this area, and would also retime and work on the intersection at Poth and Hamilton. So this is a view of what, this is existing, this is what the proposed view would be. You can see the plan is to put the multi-use path on the south side of the road, therefore not impacting any of the large overhead utilities that are on the north side of the street. You can see, you know, widening it, this is at the FedEx facility there to the north, and so you can see the impact there, if you want to go to the next one. Again, this is, this is existing, and then we ultimately believe this is what the new view will look like. So it not only improves the road, but adds capacity, you know, as we continue to work with property owners in that area about either redeveloping property or adding new developments to them, we certainly believe this is necessary. All told, this project is roughly a $4 million project, and so, again, as you are all aware, outside of OPWC, the idea of doing this project inside our current annual street maintenance program is not realistic or feasible at this time, and so this really represents a good deal for the city. Again, you know, I'll mention, you know, this just for the record, while Poth Road is certainly not the worst street as far as infrastructure in the city, part of what Ryan and I do when we're evaluating projects is not only find the deserving and needy projects throughout the city, but also look to make sure that we're evaluating projects that we believe will score high enough. These are very, very competitive, and only have become more competitive over the last five or six years, and so the time and effort and resources utilized putting together an application, you know, we feel are best spent looking at projects that we believe will score high. I, I guess I have that.
Talk.
Yeah, go ahead. So as part of the application process, we're required to have a public meeting, which is kind of why we're here, not only to introduce the project to everybody, but also to get feedback. I have a sign-in sheet and also comment forms, if you want to take one and fill one out. I'm going to just go ahead and start it here, and if you go around and then get people in the audience as well, I've got a kind of stack of pens, if anybody needs one, let me know, but. So we get points on the application for doing a public meeting, that obviously helps with our scoring, and, you know, getting feedback that you have, whether you feel like the idea of the project or not, you know, any feedback is welcome at this point. In terms of schedule, the application is due, we're working on it right now, it's due next Monday, turn that into the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, and they have a committee there that scores the applications against all of the other projects that get submitted from Columbus, Franklin County, all the other suburbs in Franklin County, and we'll find out how we did in the beginning of December, and then the funding becomes available next July. So if we're successful, we'll know in December, and we'll start planning for the project, things really won't get kicked off on formal design efforts until probably next summer, and then the construction will take place in 2021, so it's not something that's going to happen immediately, there's a process we go through here. If we are successful, we can get funded, we'll probably have another public meeting down the road, you know, once we get into design, have a little more detailed show of what we're showing, these graphics up here today. What, what questions may council have?
Have, have you done a study on the increase in traffic flow on Poth Road due to the changing of the gate at?
Part of what we're doing right now is actually doing, part of our application process is actually including a traffic study as well.
I would assume that it's quite higher than what?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we did traffic counts just recently, within the last month, and there were about 3,000 vehicles per day higher than what OPWC had from the last time that they did any sort of traffic counts, which is probably within the last couple of years.
Yeah, quite an increase. I noticed the increase when I, because I use that, I use Poth Road quite a bit, get to Fifth Avenue.
Right.
And so I frequently am at, you know, the corner of Poth and Yerling, and oftentimes I'm four or five cars backward, before I was the only car there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's definitely a big difference. I think it would be a big help to make it a little wider, so, you know, help the traffic flow out a little bit.
Absolutely.
It looks like the, that little pink down at the end, down towards where I live, goes away too, or, right? You know where that, where if you keep going straight, you could almost run into a traffic bowl.
Well, we're going to try to prevent that.
Right, now, it looks like that's going away on, right about where that green is right there on?
It's still, it's still, right there by Parkland Circle, Chris?
Right, just, just a tiny.
It's still, it's still a little bit.
Nothing like it, like it is now, it's really.
Correct, correct. I mean, most of the widening is going to occur there towards the south, so I think that's, I think that's pretty accurate. It's not, it probably takes out some of the angry or higher intensity there.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions? Okay, I think we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of Resolution 42, 2019? Well, is there anyone who is opposed to Resolution 42, 2019? All right, one more time, if there's anyone who is in opposition to Resolution 42, 2019, please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing at this time on Resolution 42, 2019, and we will move on to our verification of copies. Ms. Al, please call the roll, on whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, including any add-on legislation.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
All right, so we will begin our ordinances and resolutions for the evening. First up, we have a third reading on ordinance 88, 2019, it's permitting an additional exception from the minimum driveway setback in residential districts where an existing driveway previously encroached on the required setback and where the property owner is merely replacing the existing driveway. Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 88, 2019, moving forward its adoption.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and adoption of ordinance 88, 2019. Questions or comments?
Mr. President, if I could, I just want to thank our chief building official, Mike Halsey, and our permit technician, Theresa Natoshin, for working and looking at this issue and working with our residents to ensure that they can make improvements to their home in trying to reduce, you know, the bureaucratic red tape, so to speak, as they look to make improvements, and so I want to thank them for their efforts on this, on this issue.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who has a comment? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance 88, 2019 has been adopted. It's our last item of legislation under third reading. Under second reading, we have ordinance 93, 2019, it's making and approving a fund transfer in the amount of $200,084.03 to $200,002.84, $202,084.06. We'll have this amended, from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the debt service fund, making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $202,000. fund, making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of two hundred, two thousand, eighty-four dollars, six cents from the debt service fund to the debt service expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance ninety-three, twenty-nineteen, and amend as read.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Cantor for introduction and adoption to, and amended. Let me back up here. So I have a motion for introduction, adoption, amending and adoption. Amending as read and adoption of Ordinance ninety-three, twenty-nineteen. Questions or?
No adoption.
We're not adopting.
Oh, you didn't say adoption.
We're only amending.
All right, so I have, okay, I thought I heard it. That's why I was having trouble. Okay. So I have a motion to amend Ordinance ninety-three, twenty-nineteen as read. Questions or comments? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-three, twenty-nineteen has been adopted, has been amended as read. All right, I think I give my page change. There we go. All right, and that's being read other than that by title only. Next, we have Ordinance ninety-four, twenty-nineteen. It's approving and making a fund transfer in the amount of three hundred twenty-one thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars, fifty-six cents from unappropriated monies in the Wim Pity Fund to the debt service fund and attributing it to various accounts in the Wim Pity Fund, making a supplemental appropriation of three hundred twenty-one thousand, seven hundred thirty-five dollars, fifty-six cents from the debt service fund to the debt service expense account and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. It's the last item we have under second readings. Under first reading, we begin with Ordinance one oh one, twenty-nineteen. It's amending one six one point one five A vacation leave of the codified ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance one oh one, twenty-nineteen, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance one oh one, twenty-nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one oh one, twenty-nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Ordinance one oh one, twenty-nineteen. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance one oh one, twenty-nineteen has been adopted. Our next ordinance, one oh two, twenty-nineteen. It's amending one six one point one one C one of the codified ordinances tied of legal holidays and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance one oh two, twenty-nineteen, move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance one oh two, twenty-nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one oh two, twenty-nineteen.
Thank you, move to adopt.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Ordinance one oh two, twenty-nineteen. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance one oh two, twenty-nineteen has been adopted. Our next ordinance is one oh three, twenty-nineteen. It's authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of eight thousand, eight hundred seventy-one dollars, eight cents from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the fire hydrants expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance one oh three, twenty-nineteen, move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Heck for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance one oh two, I'm sorry, one oh three, twenty-nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one oh three, twenty-nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Heck for adoption of Ordinance one oh three, twenty-nineteen. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance one oh three, twenty-nineteen has been adopted. Our next ordinance, one oh four, twenty-nineteen. It's making a fund transfer in the amount of four hundred forty-two thousand, ninety-three dollars, fifty-three cents from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the debt service fund, making a supplemental appropriation of fifty-five thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars, eleven cents from the debt service fund to the debt service account and declaring an emergency. That's being read by title only. Next, we have Ordinance one oh five, twenty-nineteen. It's approving and making a supplemental appropriation of twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars, fifty cents from the fleet reserve and maintenance fund to the fleet reserve and maintenance account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance one oh five, twenty-nineteen, move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Heck for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance one oh five, twenty-nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one oh five, twenty-nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Heck for adoption of Ordinance one oh five, twenty-nineteen. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance one oh five, twenty-nineteen has been adopted. Next up, we have Ordinance one oh six, twenty-nineteen. It's authorizing and approving a one-time exemption to one six one point oh nine B vacation and sick leave carryover for the purpose of hiring a highly qualified employee to the city of Whitehall and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance one oh six, twenty-nineteen, move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance one oh six, twenty-nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one oh six, twenty-nineteen. Move to adopt.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of Ordinance one oh six, twenty-nineteen. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Ordinance one oh six, twenty-nineteen has been adopted. Our next ordinance is one oh seven, twenty-nineteen. It's authorizing and approving a supplemental appropriation in the amount of six hundred eighty-four thousand, six hundred fifty dollars from the general fund to the property acquisition and maintenance expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance one oh seven, twenty-nineteen, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance one oh seven, twenty-nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance one oh seven, twenty-nineteen.
Thank you, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Con, by Ms. Coniston for adoption of Ordinance one oh seven, twenty-nineteen. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Mr. President, if I could, I'm sorry, before you call the roll, I just wanted to state for the record that this is the acquisition by the city of the property located at the southwest corner of Broad and Hamilton, which is currently occupied by the check cashing business. The city has been awarded a safety grant through the Ohio Department of Transportation for that acquisition as a right-of-way acquisition in preparation of the Broad and Hamilton Intersection Improvement Project. And so these funds, once the closing and the relocation funds have been allocated to the tenant, once they have been expensed, then the city will ask for reimbursement. It's a hundred percent reimbursement grant. So we'll be getting these funds back just as soon as we can from ODOT after the closing. So I just wanted to put that on the record that this is a reimbursement grant for the property that has the check cashing business at Broad and Hamilton. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
All right, the rules have been suspended on Ordinance one oh two, twenty-nineteen.
Thank you, move to adopt.
Second.
We just did that.
Oh, okay.
That was one oh seven.
Yeah, there was one oh seven.
What did I say?
One oh two.
One oh two? One oh two, one oh three, four, five, six, seven, whatever.
Two plus.
That was for adoption.
All right.
That was for adoption. Thank you.
That's what I, I'd be confusing. I thought I did, but I didn't write the number down, and that's what found me. Okay, so let me state that again. Ordinance one oh seven, twenty-nineteen has been adopted. We good there, Mr. Bibb?
You're fine.
All right, next, that's the last ordinance we have for this evening. We'll begin with some resolutions. We have Resolution forty, twenty-nineteen. Whitehall City Council's objection to the transfer of liquor permit number three five four eight two two seven from that number to liquor permit number two eight four eight four six six held by Hamilton and Main Sanoco Incorporated, doing business as Hamilton and Main Sanoco Incorporated, located at forty-six hundred East Main Street, Whitehall, Whitehall, Ohio, four three two one three, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Resolution forty, twenty-nineteen, and ask for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Morrison and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution forty, twenty-nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution forty, twenty-nineteen.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of Resolution forty, twenty-nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Resolution forty, twenty-nineteen has been adopted. Next, we have Resolution forty-one, twenty-nineteen. That's authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with NAI Ohio Equities LLC to list and market the property at five thousand East Broad Street and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Resolution forty-one, twenty-nineteen, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Morrison and a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution forty-one, twenty-nineteen. Questions or comments? Okay, so this is the old golf, golf dome property for anyone who may be interested. So, Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution forty-one, twenty-nineteen.
Move to adopt.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Morrison, the second by Mr. Con, Ms. Coniston. That's twice.
He did that twice.
I know.
Should I go with a deeper voice?
Actually, maybe Mark should be up here. I don't know. All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Morrison and a second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of Resolution forty-one, twenty-nineteen. Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes. Now go and do it for you. So you both got, you got our yeses.
Yes.
It's kicking sore.
Morrison?
Yes.
All right, so Resolution forty-one, twenty-nineteen has been adopted, and I appreciate you guys filing up to make me not look so bad. All right, so next, we have Resolution forty-two, twenty-nineteen. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Program or programs and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wish, I would like to introduce Resolution forty-two, twenty-nineteen, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
The motion by Ms. Heck and a second by Mr. Cantor for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution forty-two, twenty-nineteen. Questions or comments? Ms. Al, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution forty-two, twenty-nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Heck and a second by Mr. Cantor for inter, or for adoption of Resolution 422019. Ms. Alden, please call and roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Resolution 422019 has been adopted. Next, we have Resolution 432019. It's resolving to approve then announce certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 432019 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 432019. Questions or comments? Ms. Alden, please call and roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 432019.
Thank you, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Cantor for adoption of Resolution 432019.
Hello.
I just took a nap.
Ms. Alden, please call and roll.
I don't know what's going on that long.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Yes.
Heck?